Okay. Uh, good evening, everybody. This is the November tenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Affordable Housing Committee for the Town of New Canaan, the Project Development Subcommittee. Um, I'm Krista Nielsen, and I will be chairing the meeting this evening. The first thing on the agenda is the roll call and call to order. So, um, let's take attendance. Hillary Ormont.
Here.
Bill Perret. I do not see, so he's absent. Krista Nielsen here. Mike Sweeney.
Here.
Jane Williams.
Here.
Jeff Williams.
Here.
Okay, well, thank you guys for coming, and I'm glad we got as many of us as we did. Um, I also invited the larger committee, the whole Affordable Housing Committee. I don't know if anyone else will attend, but, um, for Jeremy and Miles, this is kind of the core group minus one that you'll be working with. Um, so the main purpose of the meeting tonight, as I told you in the email, is to introduce you guys to our consultants at Amenta Emma. Um, and I'll do that in just a minute and talk about the contract that we've signed with them, what the work is they're going to be doing, the timeline that they're going to be doing it in. Um, so that's just the, the, kind of what we're going to do. I don't think it's going to take a super long time unless we get into a really a good conversation, and they may have some questions for us. Just as a little bit of background, I can't remember. The contract probably got signed at like the meeting of October, and probably mid-October, Amenta Emma, um, was able to walk these sites. So they are familiar with the sites. I was also able to help them get a bunch of background information from the different town departments on past parking studies, uh, decking studies, development plans for any of these sites. So, um, they are familiar with as much of that as I could find. I mean, over the course of this evening, if there are other things you guys are familiar with that you want them to know going into this, of course, please bring that up. But hopefully, you know, they're kind of at the same starting place we are at this point. I mean, we've spent some time going over, coming up with these sites, but, um, hopefully, at this point, we're all at the same, same level. Um, and then after we hear from Amenta Emma and have our discussion, um, I do see we have at least one member of the public. If we have any public comment, we'll take it, and then we'll be done. So that's the, the short agenda for tonight. So let, oh, here comes Bill Perret.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. Hi, Bill. Welcome. Um, so Miles and Jeremy, Bill is the, the fifth, fifth? Sixth member of our Subcommittee here. So we have, we have a full house tonight. Um, okay. So with that, let me turn it over to Miles and Jeremy, who can introduce themselves and talk about the project a little bit.
Yeah, great. Uh, thank you all for trusting us in this assignment. Um, we're, Jeremy and I are very, very excited, and we enjoyed the walkthrough, um, the other day. Jeremy Jimokowski is a, a senior project designer, um, with Amenta Emma, and he and I will be collaborating to work together and coming up with the schemes and, um, sort of comparing notes and kicking ideas back and forth before we present things to you. Um, I, um, I think many of you know I, I was the architect along with Amenta Emma on the, uh, Canaan Parish project, um, several years ago. So very proud of that, that project. But yeah, no, we're just super excited to get going. Um, in advance of the meeting, um, we did prepare some base drawings, um, just of the existing conditions of the site, a little bit of site analysis, um, graphics that we, should we share those now, Krista? Is, is now the appropriate time?
Um, how about, would, do you want me to walk everyone through the process?
Yeah, sure.
We've been going through.
Yeah, that's fine. Sorry. I'll let, I'll let Jeremy introduce himself, even though I already did.
Yeah, yeah. Then we'll get into the meat.
Uh, so I'm Jeremy Jimokowski. I always tell people Jeremy is fine. The last name's got a lot of letters in there. So, um, I've been with Amenta Emma for four years, but before that I did a number of transit-oriented developments in New Haven and Branford and kind of along the coastline. So, uh, Miles knows it. I like to geek out around trains and transportation. So, uh, super excited to, to look at these sites with you guys and, and see what we can come up with.
And just to put an explanation, explanation point on that, um, Jeremy took the train to New Canaan the day that they did the site walk. So he came in by train.
Right.
Okay, so for anyone who's not familiar, I mean, I'm happy to circulate to anybody the, the contract that we signed with them. I feel like we had discussed the scope of work as a committee prior to that. But if anyone has specific questions on what Amenta Emma is here to do, I'm happy to answer those. Just to give you a brief overview, I mean, they're going to gather, uh, base information about each of these sites. They have walked the sites, as I've already, as I already pointed out. Um, and then ultimately, they're going to develop two site plan options for each site to explore the maximum residential unit yield based on different parking and building configurations. So that would be a total of six plans we'll be looking at. Three sites, two plans each. Um, and then we need to get that down to one, uh, preferred option that they'll kind of flesh out a little further with us as a committee. And then ultimately, when we feel like we're good with that option, we're going to make a recommendation to the elected officials of the town. Um, I'm not exactly clear at this moment on which elected officials of the town need to, this needs to go to, but we will clear that up in the next few months. Um, so just to give you a general timeline, and this is what I've proposed to Amenta Emma, but I want to make sure the committee is all in agreement on this. Basically, where we are now is November, so they're meeting with us to introduce all of this. Um, I'm thinking that the month of December, they'll be going back to develop, um, the initial site plans for each site, two options for each site. Um, and then I think when we, after we have those, uh, I think in January, they'll, they'll present those to us in a meeting, either in Zoom or in person. I penciled in January twelfth because I think we usually meet the second Monday of the month, but that is to be determined. Um, after they give us those options, we as a committee need to, I would think, want to get some public feedback on that. Um, and I have some ideas for how we get public feedback. I'm thinking maybe we do a survey. That seemed to be pretty successful during the P O C D process that the Planning and Zoning Commission did last year. Um, we reached a lot of people with a survey, and I think, given that this is visual, if, if we put enough explanation in the material with the survey, people could go online and look at the options and, you know, read whatever narrative we've attached to them. And then we could have a series of questions, kind of surveying people's opinions on it. We could also talk about doing a public meeting where we present these options. Um, but I'm leaving basically the end of January and all of February open for us as a committee to get public comment. Um, that's not really up to Miles and Jeremy, that's up to us. Um, so once they get public comment in March, we'll give them feedback, or once we get public comment, we'll give, um, Amenta Emma some feedback in March so that they can hone in on a preferred option. We can help them hone in on a preferred option based on the feedback. Um, and then by April, hoping that they can present the preferred option again in a meeting setting like this, either in person or on Zoom. They can use the rest of April to, to prepare magnitude of cost estimation, estimations, and, um, help us put together a draft presentation for town leadership. And then, so my goal is ultimately to wrap this up by May. By May, we are going to whomever we need to go to, to present, you know, what we as a Subcommittee, as the entire Affordable Housing Committee, and hopefully with some town feedback, think is the best site to pursue for development for two thousand and thirty-two. So, um, it, it's a little longer process than I think Miles and Jeremy were hoping for. They could do it a lot quicker than this, but, um, I really wanted to wait until after the holidays to have them present the site plans to us because I think, I just know this from being in planning and zoning, that when you do things during busy times of year, you lose a lot of people. And then at the end, people start saying, I didn't know about this. I didn't come to that meet, you know? So I think doing it during the holidays is rough. So I think if we wait until January to roll out some site plans, that hopefully is a calmer time, and people can participate if they want to. That also gives us kind of the doldrums of winter to get community feedback. And then, you know, by spring, late spring, we should have a recommendation. So, um, do you guys have any feedback or thoughts or questions on what Amenta Emma is going to do in the timeframe? Go ahead, Mike.
Just, um, refresh, man. I don't recall whether we had set out any constraints or parameters on Amenta Emma, for example. Did we give them a guideline that a minimum of parking, for example, like one spot per unit? Or did we leave that open? Did we say, you know, no more than like forty or fifty feet? You know, some, some, just outliers that we, we probably would think would be, uh, a bridge too far? Or are we kind of leaving it a little open to their expertise?
So, um, on the parking piece, I, we did not outline for them, I don't believe, a number of spots per unit, although I, our zoning regulations do have something. And even though I've told them that our zoning regulations may not be ultimately what dictates the development of this site, we probably will have to develop something new. I would consider, you know, looking at those and at least using them. I mean, I think we need at least one, probably one space per unit. And then also the other thing, Mike, was we said no net loss of the public parking that was currently on the sites. So, given that these are all currently active parking lots for the town, we don't want to lose that parking supply, um, for the town. So we're, we've asked them to not do that. Um, and then in terms of height, we didn't, we haven't told you specifically. Um, again, I've told them to get a general idea from the planning and zoning, the zoning regulations right now. Um, but I think in some places, we may be able to exceed the height and bulk of what the existing zoning regulations, um, provide. But we haven't been, I, the, I'll leave that to Miles and Jeremy if they need us to be more explicit. I don't want to, you know, hamper them too much in their design process, but I also don't want them to feel like they're flailing.
Krista, just two things. One, you mentioned, you know, I realize it wasn't precise, but one spot per unit. Does that vary based upon the size of the unit? And then, second of all, I, I just don't know. Will it be a cost estimate? Either it will be, huh?
Yeah, at the end, they're going to give us a rough, rough cost estimates. It's not going to be, you know, a fine-tuned cost estimate. I would have to look at the zoning regulations, which I don't have in front of me at the moment, to tell you parking spaces per unit. Um, I, Miles, do you have any recollection of what you guys did at Canaan Parish? I think you might have done two.
I think, I think we ended up with more like one and a half. I guess, you know, we probably want to be somewhere between one and one and a half. I mean, you know, T O D, you know, you can go really low. Um, I, I think, uh, I, I guess I would want to leave that as a conversation with you all as we start to develop things and kind of see how, what makes sense, you know? We can give you, obviously, we can show you like this is one per one. This is one, what happens if it goes to one per five, one per, one point five and, um, things like that. Uh, but if anybody has any strong feelings, you know, like the market, you know, needs to be one and a half, you know, or something like that. I mean, that, I guess, um, our, our mindset is going to be, we're going to be kind of like thinking like with several hats, like as an architect, design professional, as a developer, as a town, like, you know, what is a town? How does this fit in? But what is, you know, what really makes sense from a, from a dollars and cents and, and penciling out perspective? And usually, we find we're kind of in that range of like one to one and a half or maybe a little bit less if it's senior or, you know, something like that. So I don't know. I think we can, I think we should just be open about it. If you, if somebody has a strong feeling, let us know. We'll try to.
So would your, would your final report be clear and articulate whatever number you have and either compare it to our current regulations or some standard? So we understand what we're getting into.
Yeah, absolutely. That makes sense.
Um, and on that note, I think, I mean, I've said this before, and we just need to continue to remember this, but probably another person who's going to have an opinion on that is Scott Hobbs at the Housing Authority. Um, I know we, as a committee, have heard him say that whatever the parking ratio is at Canaan Parish, that that has been a, a better fit for them than what was done at Millport. I think Millport has come up short in terms of parking.
Yeah, Krista, I, I think he's, I've had conversations with him about this kind of, uh, topic, and he's, um, uh, not happy with the way Millport's worked out because, you know, there's a lot of parking on the street. People use that transit parking as it's semi-permanent parking. And I think he sees that as a shortcoming of whatever they designed in.
Yeah.
At Millport, if I recall, I think we're a tad under one. Um, and I remember that being discussed at the, at the Planning and Zoning hearing. It was a concern, and it's tight. And, uh, there's some parking out by the pond across the street that people use, and.
That's the public parking.
It's a, it's, it's an issue at, at, uh, at Millport. Um, at Canaan Parish, we were a tad over one. I, I thought we were under one point five, but you may be right. Miles, we, maybe we were closer to one point five, but I thought it was like one and a quarter. Definitely we're over, well over one, it's worked out a lot better.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, and I, sorry, Mike. I forgot Mike Sweeney is on the Housing Authority Board as well. So he's, he's a good conduit for this type of information.
Yeah, it would, it would actually be good in our report to say like, comparing to Canaan Parish and Millport, this is where our range lands.
Okay, other questions or comments on the scope of work and timeline before, um, we let Amenta Emma kind of talk to us about their plans? Hillary has her hand raised.
Yeah, I, the parking issue, I think, is, is a great one to cover because I know there's been a lot of pushback in our particular community on the new housing bills that are coming up on the, the lack of parking that's, that would be required under them. And I think that it, A, it's people here drive and they, and they do like to have their cars. And I think to the extent we can provide as much parking as feasible, I think that will go a long way towards goodwill and, um, and the public really being on board with, with what we're planning on doing.
Thanks, Hillary. Okay. Um, well, um, let, uh, Miles and Jeremy kind of talk us through their initial thoughts on each of the sites, um, to kind of give us, you know, where they're coming from, what they see. And then I guess we can have a discussion about that if we have anything to add they've missed or that we want them to look at further.
Sure. Um, as Krista and Miles both mentioned, we, we did have a chance to tour, uh, the three sites that you guys have, have provided us with and, um, just have some initial analysis. So I was, uh, we just want to share those slides with you guys and kind of walk through what we were seeing. And, um, maybe we can stop at the end of each, uh, site and, and hear any feedback, anything we might have missed. So we'll jump right in.
Yeah, these are not designs, they're just the existing conditions with sort of notes on them. So, uh, don't want to set any expectations.
We're just getting started. All right, here we go. Um, so this is the, uh, the lumberyard site. I think everybody is probably pretty familiar with this one. And, and this is a, a really exciting site. It's really big, and there's a lot to sink our teeth into here. So, um, what we were noticing about this site, it's really like, uh, as far as a T O D site goes, it's pretty amazing, right? That connection to the train station is, um, is not, it, it's very unique. Uh, and so I think that's one thing. It's, it's not kind of in the written language here yet, but that connection to the train station from this site is going to be very important. Uh, right now, it's kind of, you can walk along the edge of the, the chain link fence, or you can sneak between the cars. But that's really something we want to focus on and, and celebrate a little bit here, especially as a T O D development. Um, the rest of the perimeter of the site, and we'll go edge by edge in just a second here, but there, this is a much more commercial site than the other ones that we've been looking at or we, we will look at. Um, so just to kind of walk around and share with you guys our thoughts and feelings about the different edges, and they're kind of numbered, so you can kind of follow along. Um, number one is, is right on the street edge. And so that's really where we're thinking, you know, as this development starts to, to take shape, that's where those kind of retail or, um, commercial spaces are going to want to be. They're going to want that street frontage. Uh, and we're going to want to continue that building line, uh, on our side of the street and kind of create that walkable, um, Main Street feel. So that's going to be a pedestrian-focused, uh, section of the, of the site there. Uh, as we move down to two, you know, now we're getting into the grade drop. So this is down almost a full story. Um, and there's kind of a heavy embankment, uh, that we're going to be dealing with there. And, um, I know there's some kind of conversation around ownership of that particular parcel, um, but that, that grade drop and the proximity of that new building to, um, to the site edge for us is something that we're going to be concerned about and, and making sure that we're not limiting, uh, the light getting through there or kind of impeding any views or, or things like that. Um, three, as I, as I mentioned, is, it's a, it's an unfortunate edge right now and something that I think we're going to want to spend quite a bit of time studying. Uh, it, there is a little bit of grade differential there. Um, and so, you know, how far into that train station lot can we go to start to fix some of that, uh, and really celebrate that moment of kind of taking people from our site to the train station so it doesn't feel so tenuous? Um, edge four is the railroad, right? It's a chain link fence. It's not nice to look at right now. Uh, but the thing we noticed about edge four while we were there is the, the site continues to slope. Um, and as you get down to the other side, um, this building, even on what we would consider normally here, the backside of the building, um, is going to be a prominent view, uh, from the other side of the railroad tracks. So what this is starting to tell us is, you know, normally we could start to push things like parking to the back of the site or loading to the back of the site. Um, this is something we're going to have to pay attention to here and make sure that we're not kind of pushing the dirty stuff to the back of the site, but then it's on full display for the rest of the town anyway. Um, and we'll deal with that chain link fence because we need something a little more attractive there. Uh, and then finally, site, or edge five is really unique in that it's kind of, uh, just a sheer face. It's a wall, um, that we will have to deal with in some way. Uh, but there's also a lot of parking right up against that wall. So, uh, it does start to kind of say, you know, we can start to push some things to, towards this side of the site that maybe, uh, maybe it's the loading, maybe it's the parking, um, because it's not going to influence, it's not going to impact visually as much. Um, we do have a lot of height there to start to play with. Um. So I think, you know, those were the initial kind of thoughts and, and reactions that we had. I think site circulation is something we're going to want to pay a lot of attention to. That little kind of, uh, tail that brings you back up to Main Street is going to be, uh, helpful in kind of bringing cars in and off of the site. Um, and we're also aware of kind of some of the, the needs of Stewart's Market in terms of that, that commercial edge, um, and truck traffic and things like that. Um, and then one of my favorite parts about sites like this is it, it's like a story and a half drop from front to back. So it gives us a lot of like play in terms of the heights of things, uh, and, and it, very exciting. So, um, Miles, I don't know if you want to jump in here?
Yeah, no, it's good, uh, it was a good overview, Jeremy. Just one thing I forgot, I think we forgot to mention. Right where almost where the number five is, there's actually a, a potential street access. If Tiger or somebody pointed that out to us, um, we should add that to the, the plan, but.
You know, that property's owned by the town.
Yeah, right.
And it was always contemplated, and when they purchased it, it was always contemplated it would be a relief access to the lumberyard lot eventually.
Good note.
So when you're doing your work, um, looking at the lumberyard lot, and you're going to come up with some numbers, how do you, you know, maybe it's not our job, but how do you think about highest and best use? In other words, if, if the lumberyard yacht lot was worth one and we did something dramatically different, whatever that might be, and it was worth five, you know, how do we think about that?
Um, can you say that again? Um, so like, you said, if you, are you suggesting, um, ranking the three different sites? Or is that what you, you meant by?
Just, just on any, on any site, I'm just wondering in this work, uh, it's sort of the same question I ask about any project. How, how do you look about, how do you look at, you know, the suggestion or the value of what you're building versus what one might be able to build there in a totally different scenario?
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, is, is this whole thing developed worth, you know, picking a number ten million? But if you did X, Y, and Z, whatever that might be, it might be worth fifty million. Because the town does own this.
Right.
And so understanding the value of the lot, where we're contributing and giving up is not only what we paid for it, which was a long time ago, and therefore, I'm sure, very low, but, you know, today's value for this use or some alternative use. You know, maybe that's not part of your work, but I'm just sort of wondering, how do we think about that? Or how should we approach that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I guess, I don't know. As, as designers, uh, you know, the way we, we would, we would look at it is, is we sort of, um, as Jeremy started to say, we, we would study, um, study the circulation, how, how one gets in and out of the site, right? So where, where do road patterns? You started to like create almost like its own grid or, or, you know, block within that piece of property. Um, we, you know, we'll, we'll look at, really looking to maximize the site, right? Let's start, start there. Like how, what, what can the maximum yield without it being too dense or not having enough daylight or enough public space? Um, and, uh, in making, yeah, obviously, you know, parking takes up, uh, is oftentimes a very large driver of how you lay something out, unfortunately. Um, and, um, so, which, you know, which generally tends to, to, um, rise up the cost of development, especially if you have to go to podium or garage-style parking, which we probably will have to do, particularly in this site. Um, but the grade change helps us a little bit. Um, I mean, I mean, you, when you look at sort of like most bang for your buck uh, on a particular piece of property, it's usually like, how many units of housing can we fit on it within the current zoning regulations, maximizing it to a, a, you know, a height that we think is acceptable to the town? Um, and how many parking spaces can we get on the surface while still having some green space? And if that doesn't maximize it, then we start to look at structured parking, which we'll do here. And then the, you know, your, your, your development costs increase sort of dram, you know, dramatically when you start to do that. Um, but it, but it may be worth it, right? Um, it, and we're not the ones to sort of say like, you know, um, what the, what the maximum, I think, uh, what you can, what you sort of described, Bill, which is like, uh, what can we sell it for when we're done? But, um, I, I don't know if I'm really answering your question exactly.
Well, it's, I guess at some point, presumably, we'd have to wrap our mind around that.
Yeah. So what we will do is we'll put an order of magnitude cost to each of the sites, you know, which will, um, I think, give you, give folks a little bit better sense of, of, um, you know, what is the, like, is this worth it? Is it worth it to, you know, build five levels of parking to, uh, yield six hundred units of housing? I don't know, whatever the numbers will be.
Um. Bill, were you asking, I mean, because I, I'm not sure if this is what you're asking, but from a land use perspective, I mean, commercial property, commercial development is almost always worth more, sells for more than residential development. And obviously, in looking at this for affordable housing, I'm not saying we're ruling out a commercial development scenario here or some, a mixed-use development scenario. I mean, as Jeremy talked about, I think along Elm Street, up where the number one is, we'd want some sort of retail frontage up there. Um, but because the task before us is to build affordable housing, obviously, we're, we're not doing a solely commercial development, which means we're already discounting what the potential value of this piece of land is, uh, because we're not going to just build a casino here.
Yeah, I think that's probably it, to be truthful with you, Krista, is, you know, what is the potential value of this land? What commercial development, let's say, if that's the highest? And then we just, we sort of know what we're contributing, right?
You mean what we're leaving on the table?
Yeah, just, just to value is to, you know, when, when we get to evaluate projects.
Right, right. Yeah, I mean, I think, I think it's a fair question whether, eh, as much as this site has a lot of opportunities, whether this is the best use of it for affordable housing. Like, I, there may be other better uses for it, but there, it could be a great use for it. Don't get me wrong. I just don't know.
No, it could be a great use for it, or the alternative could be, the, the value could be so high that we could do affordable housing in other places at almost no cost to the town because of the profit we get from here. So that's just the things we have to think about, that's all.
Yeah, but I think that's probably more us than Miles and Jeremy, is my guess.
And, and I think ultimately, that would be a conversation for the town, especially for the, um, bodies to whom we are providing our input because it's a very complicated conversation to talk about. As you know, this piece of land, this particular piece of land, and what ought to be done with it, and the impact of decision A versus B versus C. So that feels like a, a big conversation for us as well as the leaders and the town.
No, I agree, it's a big conversation, but I do think that when we communicate, and, you know, it's always good to talk about these things upfront because we don't have numbers, right? But when we communicate the cost of this, it's not just how much of a check we have to write out, it's the opportunity cost that we're losing.
Right.
And then, then all those that are empowered to make these important decisions can have that information in front of them.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a great point, Bill. And I also think though that that would contemplate it being sold to a developer who would then develop it if it was mixed use, market rate housing, potentially under a statute. So we have to, we have to keep that in mind too about what the town, you know, what our goals are. And it, you know, depending on how many units we get out of, for instance, River, Riverwood or, you know, we might have to build on something that's a little bit bigger than what potentially could be at the other option. So that's just something to consider because I know that this particular lot has been um, highly desirable to a lot of people not within the town, um, to developers. And so it would, you know, it, we would just have to gauge public interest, I think, and whether they would want us to have affordable housing there in perpetuity, which would satisfy a lot of uh, requirements under the statutes, or they want, they would wanna take their chances with the developer. But it's a, it's an excellent point that you're making.
The last thing I would add is, I'm pretty sure, I haven't, we don't have the numbers, but I'm pretty sure surface parking is not the highest and best use of this site.
Surface parking?
Surface parking. So anything we do is probably gonna be.
We have to study that, I think we all agree.
Yeah, anything we're gonna do is going to probably be better, you know, more valuable to the town than that.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions or thoughts or things we wanted to point out to Amenta Emma as they continue to go forth and, and look at what could be built for affordable housing on the lumberyard site? All right, let's go to the next one.
Let's go black for everybody?
Yeah.
All right, we were still for too long.
Oh, there we go. Richmond Hill?
Okay, um. Uh, so this is the Park Street site, um.
We call it Richmond Hill.
Richmond Hill, okay. Uh, Richmond Hill. So it's smaller, right? Um, and, and kind of a much different type of setting um, than the lumberyard was. So, uh, much simpler in terms of site edges, but I think the interesting thing about this one, and we can kind of talk a little bit about, um, the, the different edges, but we're really much in, in, in neighborhood here, right? We're starting to get into some single family housing. We do have some multifamily housing uh, around us. But so this site's gonna have to react much differently than Long BR did. Uh, so kind of to the north of us, that edge number one, um, is we, while we were there, you could see onto the property, but you can see in this aerial image, there's quite a bit of vegetation. There is a lot of visual separation from the property to the north of us. Um, the site does drop again around a story from the northeast corner to the northwest corner. Um, it kind of goes on a diagonal, but that's the most visible uh, drop there. Um, there is a, a nice sidewalk and some crosswalks, so there is kind of a pedestrian feel to this. Um, but that I think is to get folks to downtown as opposed to creating that kind of retailer mixed use development that we were talking about in the lumberyard. Um, on edge two, I think one of the things that really caught us, really impacted us as part of the sidewalk was not only the height of the buildings themselves, which kind of go from three to five stories as you move south on the page here. Um, but they all seem to sit up between, you know, half to a full story and then maybe a little bit above that. Um, above the, the road, right? And so you're kind of dealing with these three story buildings on top of what we're calling a plinth here. Uh, and kind of really sets the tone for that street. Um, you're not kind of getting that pedestrian scale. Uh, you are kind of impacted by these taller buildings. And so we do feel like there's an opportunity on this site to, to put a little more height than you would typically see on something kind of within this single family housing type of uh, environment. Um, as you do move around to edge three, that street tightens up and that's kind of the current entry and exit point to the parking lot. Um, and the scale of the building starts to step down. And I think there's some new construction actually happening there right now. So, um, so we'll have to see how that kind of goes as it develops. Um, and edge four, again, we're right on that kind of property line with a, with a single family house, um, decent size. So, you know, the, the stuff that we would propose would probably be within the scale of that, maybe a little taller to kind of help with that multifamily housing across the way. Um, and then in the northwest corner, there is this kind of subtle connection through that Walgreens parking lot that gets you uh, over towards the train station. So you kind of have these two exit points as a pedestrian that can take you to downtown or to the train station. Um, and actually, I think, uh, one part of our group went through the, the downtown connection, uh, the green arrow to the kind of um, east on this page. And then a few of us went um, to the west to kind of experience what that walk was like. And it's, it's really quick to the train station as a walk. And so um, again, still very much in that TOD mindset of, you know, I can live here and walk to the train station or walk to downtown or walk to where I wanna eat or uh, grocery shop. So, um, smaller scale, uh, but still a, a decent drop across this site. And so that, that notion of structured parking, to Miles's point on the lumberyard, is still very much in play here. Um, in terms of not needing, you know, a ton of ramps, we can use the site uh, geometries to our, to our advantage here.
Uh, when you took your walk, did you talk at all about use of that lot now? Versus, let's say, five years ago, pre-COVID, has that changed a lot? Do you know?
We did not have anyone from parking there. We had um, Public Works and the town engineer there. Um, but the general consensus, I would say, is that it's being used less than 50%. I mean, it's, it's not, it wasn't full that day. It wasn't even close to full that day and it's not often full. Um.
It rare, it rarely is more than half full.
Yeah.
That's my impression too.
We could get the exact numbers from the, the parking department that issues permits for um, state train station parking if, if we wanna be more exact. But yeah, it's, it's not being used nearly the way that it was before COVID.
So if we got those numbers, we would use the, whatever the use is, as opposed to what, how many parking spaces are in terms of what we have to um, put back, are you thinking?
Uh, Miles, in, in conversations with, with the woman who up until very recently ran the parking office, um, the impression I had was that she, she's, was very straightforward about it, but she said that generally speaking, people were con- were concerned about any, any suggestion that they would de-emphasize this lot in its full capacity until they had a little bit better sense as to how things were gonna shake out with going back to the city and the commuter traffic, the implications for commuter traffic. I don't know where they stand right now. That was probably six or eight months ago, but um, there was, there was some hesitation on her part to be seen to be advancing that kind of a, a point of view.
I would agree, and I think we have a new parking scheme downtown where now Elm Street is, is um, paid and lots around it, a couple of lots around it are um, are free. And so there's some juggling too of uh, employees that work on Elm Street. We provide parking, the town provides parking for for some of them in off-site lots, and this might be one of them. And it might be something that would be in play to have employees park there that work on Elm Street. Um, so it's just something we'll have to keep in mind, but I would keep it, I would try to retain the number of parking spaces here that exist for you, just as, as part of the presentation. Um, because those things are still kind of being worked out in, with town. So just something to think about.
I agree. Parking spaces have value. It's, it's like having uh, no gold bars in your pocket. I think the town would be reluctant, even if they are underutilized to uh, to lose them.
Particularly if they're covered, um, if, if they happen to be uh, garage parking, because then the, the value of them, I think, to people who commute or people who might want to commute goes up if they know that their car is gonna be inside all day or, or what have you, or we could sell, you know, do a boxcar or something there. It could, it could really be a profit center for the town, uh, parking wise.
And there's that underground lot that's, I, I don't believe it's in use right now, right? Under the temporarily there grocery store?
Yes, that's right. There is, there's, under the, the commercial um, space that's just up until the left, there was pre-development of uh, parking space underneath what is the Walgreens.
Yeah, we talked about that when we were out on the site that, um, I mean, my recollection, I, I, I know that from being on the Planning and Zoning Commission and uh, when the former first electman, Mr. Moynihan, was working through the boxcar situation that came up as an opportunity to have boxcar parking under Walgreens. And so one of the things that was kind of kicked about at the sidewalk was could we, could the town enter into some sort of lease and, and basically, I don't know, I don't know how many parking spots are here now, and I don't know how much you could fit under Walgreens, but could we use the parking under Walgreens to replace the parking that you, you may lose here for um, residential development? And, you know, there's no answer to that question right now, but it is an idea that probably merits further exploration down the road.
So Jeremy, I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant to bring this up because I suspect you probably have already factored it in. But the, the western pedestrian connection to the train station actually is not particularly convenient once you get up to the, the, the front of the buildings because it goes into the side, to the, to the, to the side of the station. And there's no way to get over the tracks, so you have to go all the way around to the end.
Yep. Good note.
Would you take a look at, um, I mean, presumably early on your presentation, I had the sense that you were talking about three, four, or five levels. I know that that's an early thought. But, um, in doing that, could you develop more parking?
This one is gonna be an interesting site, I think, because of the, it's tight, right? And so I, but I do think we're gonna try and get to the, we're gonna try and use that height to balance out um, and get the the no net loss parking, but also provide for the um, for the units that we're proposing. So I, I think what we'll find in the end, and I don't know if Miles, if you agree, but it's, it's the parking lot's almost the whole site, right? And so as we start to squeeze and push a little bit to get some, some building foundations and stuff in there, even with some park under, um, I think we're gonna be kind of uh, hard pressed to kind of get additional parking on top of replacing what's there and for the units themselves. Um, but we'll certainly try.
Yeah, I think um, parking is very important, but to try to project 15 years out or 20 year, whatever the normal model is, how many people from New Canaan are gonna be traveling into the city?
Hmm.
Um, to go to work versus how many people in the city are gonna be traveling to New Canaan? Um, there are a lot of changes happening. And to project, to use the last 20 years to project where we're going to be over the next 20, I'm not sure is good. And, you know, as you all probably know, um, the use of, the use of office buildings is changing dramatically as well in New York City, right?
Yep.
So.
We were, we were kind of wondering, or I wondered out loud at the sidewalk, is whether, you know, of all the sites, um, you know, is, does this one become a strictly residential um, development with no commercial? Because it's sort of a little bit on the outskirts and we could maximize the um, residential units and.
Well, for, for my nickel, I think that would, I wouldn't, I wouldn't put commercial there, but
Yeah.
I'm a commercial landlord, so I wouldn't know, I wouldn't.
I wouldn't think, yeah, I don't think they would work.
Miles, I think, I think when you were doing your, your description, as you started talking about this, you talked about the, the extreme elevation gains on the eastern side of, of, um, of the street. And I think it's, um, it, it's unnatural to kind of have that looming over a commercial, you know, even a commercial, a series of small stores or something. So I think it really is more natural in the way you talked about it, just being purely residential and
Yeah.
you know, with something that appears to be higher density along this, along the main thoroughfare and, and, you know, decreasing density to the west.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Can we move on to the third one?
Yeah, let's go to Locust.
Um, I just, I do wanna thank you guys for giving us three heavily sloped sites. Um, I, you, it's, it's not a joke. I love um, uh, transit and I love heavily sloped sites. I think it gives you a lot of opportunity, especially when we're talking about parking to really kind of maximize what's happening here. So, um, Locust Street is a, it's a really interesting one, not as big as um, as the lumberyard, uh, but there's a lot happening here that I think we can use to our advantage. And so, um, kind of just moving our way around the site again, and, and starting with one, I think it's a really easy edge, right? It's a residential edge. There's some vegetation, but a lot of single family residential going to the north. Uh, so again, when we start to talk about scale, um, Jeffrey, to your point, you know, we're probably gonna start to pull the scale towards the, the street and kind of away from that edge as we look at this. Um, edge two is particularly interesting. When we were out on site, there was some discussion of a potential connection uh, through, um, I believe there's a, a single family lot that goes all the way through to the street on the other side. And so can we kind of utilize that to get our, our, um, our exit out of that lower level uh, of parking as we capitalize in the slope? Um, and there's also that new commercial building that has the, the post office in it. So there is some kind of new development happening here that gives us an indication of some scale. I believe that building is about three stories right now. So um, as we kind of work our way around the site, that starts to feel like the scale that we're gonna be working with along that street edge. Um, edge number three is, it's a commercial kind of street in terms of size and scale and, and usage. And so I think that this uh, development could have some sort of retail, commercial, mixed use component along that, that street edge. Um, the, the one problem there being, uh, not from a pedestrian standpoint, but from a vehicle standpoint, we do have the firehouse directly across from this. And the trucks, as far as we understand, do um, kind of enter and exit the road at that very awkward building to road intersection. And so it's certainly something that we're gonna wanna be aware of, um, and, and kind of as we start to look at vehicle entry and exit points from the site, it may be somewhere where we wanna stay away from, just not to let that get clogged up. Uh, especially in the event of an emergency. Um, one of actually my favorite parts of this site, uh, going back and kind of uh, summarizing all this is, is four, which are these two really kind of handsome buildings that occupy that corner. Uh, and the exciting thing there is like, it, it doesn't fall on us to define that corner. That's already established within the, the community. Um, and it's something we can use to our advantage, uh, as we look at the development as a whole. Um, and then five, that little tiny stretch there, uh, I think that's where you really feel the gray drop, right? There's some, um, it's kind of a grassy uh, knoll, and then it goes up through some vegetation to that, the, the upper level street there. Um, and really, I think, uh, prime for uh, another street connection. So if, if we're trying to start to pull away from the firehouse, really leveraging these kind of two um, opposite ends uh, to see if we can get vehicles in and out of the site without doing too much harm to what's happening with those emergency uh, personnel. Um, everything kind of uh, page right and, and page down, so kind of east and west on this site. Um, it has that commercial feel. It has some actually uh, kind of more modern looking uh, buildings, the firehouse aside. Um, so there's kind of a lot of different things happening in terms of styles and scale on this site that I think will uh, really kind of uh, help us with this development quite a bit.
Up near edge five, I, I, you start to get close to the historic district. I think you're still below it, but just to be mindful of that, you start getting into um, uh, the historic district as you go up the hill off of uh, Main Street.
Thank you.
Yeah, so yes, I think the other side of Heritage Hill there, where the arrow is by edge five, that's the historic district.
Although, although there, there is that multifamily that's um, uh, just, I think, just being occupied, that's just, just northwest of, um, that area. On, on the history a little bit, because, um, I looked at this when we were just kind of pulling them together. First of all, Jeremy, I just wanna make certain that along two, where you have the word commercial,
Mm-hmm.
the buildings immediately to the left in the, in the image, they're no longer there. There, it's a, it's a crisp, crisp break between the parking, the existing parking and the parking for the post office. Um, but there is parking, if you, if you go directly to the bottom, towards the bottom of the, of the, of the, um, the, the image, that, there's a red brick building that sits there and there is parking and there's, there's pretty active coming and going from that, from that as well. There's grayed parking and then the, the buildings lifted up above that. Um, on the five and, and it, uh, Mike, you may remember this, but like, when they've looked at this in the past, five has always been thought to be a, a potential choke point when you did traffic studies. And the traffic studies that have been done, people were concerned that, that um, the residential that is Heritage Hill was gonna be affected by having that be an entrance or an exit. And the traffic studies were done kind of. And the traffic studies were done, kind of said, no, there's no issue on that. Um, so, and then, and then the other uh, potential street connection, I don't know what the current state of affairs is on the ownership of that lot. But I do know that um, people in town got pretty far down the road with um, potential acquisition of that lot. And at that time, um, the, the, the family that owned it or the estate that owned it was actually amenable to selling it to this, to the town.
Yeah, that was the last that we heard as well. So that tracks.
And one other thing that just, Jeremy, as you're thinking about it, this, this corner right down here, that's immediately across the street from the firehouse. That is a, that is a, currently it's an informal, heavily, heavily traveled exit and egress to the parking lot from downtown. In particular, the um, there's, I think there's a hundred and fifty plus uh, spaces in the lot now. And I think it's twenty-five or thirty of those are reserved for town employees. And they all happen to be towards the western edge of the lot. And so they're always coming and going um, through there. I don't know if that's a positive or a negative, it's just something that you'd probably want to be um, thinking about as you um, as you started to block this out and do a little bit of schematics on it.
You were saying they kind of move in that direction?
Pardon me?
I, can you guys see the arrow that I just drew?
Yeah, well, it's actually up, up a ways, right at the corner, right around the thrift shop, yeah, right in there where your pencil is now. People, people cross the street there and then turn and go directly into the parking lot from, from that, that kind of informal entrance, if you will. And it's, and it's pretty heavily traveled during the day.
Oh, you mean like they cross on the grass there?
Yeah, they cross on the grass just below the thrift shop and, and
Okay.
Because all of the, um, yeah, that edge, and then it just keep going up, up in the same direction you were. And all of those parking, parking spaces and the, and some of the spaces down on the one edge are reserved for town employees. You know, right in there.
Yeah.
And then people who are doing shopping up in town come down in that same area. And just as they enter the parking lot, they, they disperse out into where the, the cars are. So it's a, it's, it's pretty well known as a, as a kind of an informal entrance and exit to the parking lot.
Thank you.
So Jeremy, if you were to um, you know, build a deck for parking of some sort, I'm just trying to think of the neighboring houses. I mean, you're a little bit limited on height there, are you not?
You, are you talking kind of going towards the north here?
Well, I just the whole lot. I mean, I, you know, I just, some of the other lots you talked about with the slope and everything. And some of the neighboring properties that were four or five stories. Collection of this area here is the firehouse is probably the tallest building.
Sure.
And the others are probably two or three, but if you had to preserve, you know, town parking for the town employees, you probably have to build another deck of sorts. Then I'm just sort of wondering, how many units can you put up here?
Yeah, it's, it's a great question. I think again, we would favor the southern side of the site. But I think to really maximize this in, in terms of unit count and density, we're going to end up kind of filling in. It, it's big enough to take quite a bit of building, um, but those edges that you're describing, the single family residential are certainly ones that we're going to be um, sensitive to, uh, you know, um, as we, as we look at it.
That's fine.
Yeah, as far as parking use goes too, um, over the years, the zoning commission has approved some special permits in the area where the requirement was that the developer uh, had to grab um, by license, you know, four, five or six spots. So small point, but it, it, this ends up being a side, um, have to be mindful of that to reserve some spots for uh, um, zoning approvals are appended upon people buying spaces in there every year for their, you know, for their guests and for the residents and the units.
So Mike, are they paid for spaces? They have to have, do an.
There's a fee that's paid every year, as I recall.
Okay, thank you.
I think they have to, they lease them, right, Mike? That, they kind of have to do business with the town and lease so many spaces, yeah.
Theoretically, I think the town probably could, could uh, abate, you know, the, the lease or the license. But um, I think some of the zoning approvals were, were appended upon that, but it, it could always be adjusted too, I suppose.
Yeah.
Why are the lots always full?
That, that lot is pretty heavily utilized, I think.
That lot is very heavily utilized. Like again, talking with the woman who ran the parking office, she said, um, they typically over permit that, and she said, we're, as a result, it's always full.
There's a lot of fire department use too.
Yes.
So I think um, if it would be helpful for you, Jeremy and Miles, after the meeting tonight, I can try and get you uh, parking usage for each of these sites from the, the town, just so we have a sense of, I mean, I think we already have a sense, but we have actual data to back up that sense of how utilized they are. Um, so how's everybody feeling? I mean, I, I think this is a really great start. I, I feel like Jeremy and Miles have nailed it and they understand these sites. But um, you guys ready for them to go back and start to workshop some ideas of what can be built here and talk to us again in January?
It's a good approach. We should go forward.
Yeah.
The one question I, sorry, the one question I find myself asking is, does it make sense for you to come back with maximum usage and optimal usage from your point of view? Because the two could very well not be the same, given your sensitivity already to neighbors and to heights, et cetera, elevations. Is the right question to ask the highest possible number or what you would imagine as the best use or both?
I think that's a really interesting approach, right? And, and one of the things that's going to get super interesting for us is as you start to apply some of those other restrictions, right? If we look at the zoning and the height, and then really parking in these types of developments is always the driver. You know, we could fit six hundred units, but we can only park two hundred. So um, I think it's an excellent question of what is the maximum look like? And what does the, what feels right? Um, and that, that second question is going to be a lot harder for everybody to define. Um, what looks, what feels right to Miles and I is going to be probably a little different than what feels right to you guys. So um, but yeah, we can certainly use that as a tact to, to bring back the information. Sure.
I, I think as a general rule, we need to shade toward maximum. Uh, it's easier to adjust downward. When you look at in neighbors and of course we have an epiphany too and say that this was stupid. It's easier to go down and adjust than start out with what we think is optimum and then realize maybe we left something on the table.
I agree with Mike.
I agree with Mike as well.
Yeah, it's, it's a good point because like oftentimes what we'll look at is um, you know, we'll, we'll look at schemes where we favor development on one side versus another side. But we're both, in both cases, we're sort of trying to maximize, but you're right, it is easy to just pull back. Um, usually what happens is somebody likes a little bit of each, from each scheme and we, we end up with a hybrid, but.
Yeah, and I mean, the numbers that we need might dictate, you know, if the maximum that we can fit on Richmond Hill is ten units, that might not solve for what we need to solve for. So that's, but, but, but it could go in our back pocket for the next one if we only need ten units four years later. So it's all helpful. Do you guys have like a, this is sort of like asking your favorite child. Do you have a favorite? Do you, is there one that you look at and you think like, just in your, you know, at first glance, I'm curious, I'm so curious to see the plans, but I'm so curious what, which one, if there is a favorite that sticks out to you right now.
Jeremy.
We're, we're both grinning because we clearly have this conversation. Um, uh, Krista and Miles have done a really good job at outlining, I, you know, transportation is my thing, as close to the train station as I can get in that site. There's a reason why developers are, are, you know, itching to get a piece of it. It's big enough to make a huge debt. And I think also it's big enough to create like, it's going to be a place. It's going to, it's going to have its, its vibe. It's going to enhance the town. It's not just going to be a building that we're adding. It, it's going to have an impact there um, on that street front, on that street edge um, in people's experience. So to me, they're all great sites. Uh, I'm, but the lumberyard is really, really exciting to see what we can get onto that.
Cool.
I would think of that site too, as you know, as um, a site that has multiple uses, it has some commercial use. And it has, perhaps has mixed income use, right? I mean, that's a lot of what um, affordable housing developments are. It's like nine percent tax credits, mixed income, you get twenty. Um, so then you could play with that, could be twenty percent affordable or eighty percent affordable, you know. Doesn't, it's not going to change how we designed it, is my point, so.
Yeah, and I think that it'll be interesting to see what comes out of the special session out of Hartford, because we might now have middle housing requirements that we'll have to meet as well. Or to try to, I mean, or, yeah, I mean, all of that. So I think, you know, where we can have flexibility to respond to that is always a good thing too. Just keeping an eye on, we don't know what's going to come out of this special session yet, so we'll see.
Krista, how should we be thinking about, you know, if you were thinking of the lumberyard, commercial sites? I mean, is that something like we're desperate to have more commercial sites in town or just? Just, just, I'm just wondering, you know, just because having commercial sites that sit vacant, you know, would not be the, the best thing. So how do we, how do we put that into the equation?
I don't have a great answer for that. I mean, from what I've seen in my time on planning and zoning, there's always a concern when anyone's building new commercial in town, which hasn't happened a lot frankly in my time. But even the new development at Burtus Avenue is going to have, has to have by zoning, a small commercial component. And you know, people spoke about, is that going to sit empty? Is that going to put us out of business? Are we just expanding the downtown? You know, to have more vacancy in these commercial buildings. So um, yeah, I, I don't have a personal good answer on how much commercial the town can support um, and what type of commercial. But I also think the site is screaming for, lumberyard site is screaming for mixed use. Like I think it would be a really odd development if we didn't have a mixed use component in some form or fashion, whether it's retail or office in that development. So um, just the planner in me has a hard time letting go of the mixed use. But I, I can't tell you, you know, how, how much demand there is for it.
So we only get down to decision date, you know, if we have X percentage commercial, you know, whether it's a retail store or an office building, you know, which body in town sort of thinks that through?
Maybe probably is helpful in that. The Chamber of Commerce would be really helpful. Um, the Board of Realtors would probably be really helpful. Um, and then I think, you know, the first selectman and the selectmen.
And I mean, I can also tell you that last month at the Planning and Zoning Commission, we approved uh, a lease for the alternative high school to move into what was the Bankwell Building next door there on Elm Street, um, because they've outgrown the space in the current Board of Education building right there. I, I think it's two twenty Elm. So um, you know, there may be other town uses and needs in that area as opposed to leasing.
And Krista, I think that's, that's really interesting that you, I mean, that's an institutional use. Was the alternative, I don't know exactly what you're talking about. Was the alternative commercial?
So I mean, the Bankwell, what I call the Bankwell Building, that's right there between two twenty Elm and the train station. And that, that was a bank. So yes, that was commercial. It's been vacant for, I'm not sure how long, at least a year, maybe two. Um, and so, yeah, it, I mean, it's a natural fit. It's right next to the Board of Education building, but.
And it's, and are we still hearing the conversations about allowing office, um, office expansion to the first floor i- in the commercial zones?
Um, I have not had any, heard any conversations.
Well, if anybody had heard it, you would have heard it, that, that P and Z or something just like that.
Yeah, I mean, I can think of a lot of uses for non-residential at the lumberyard. Like a, I mean, this town desperately needs childcare uh, facilities. This town, you know, there's, there's a whole issue about schools and whether to move the West School, the public preschool out of West to make space for, for students, um, K through four or five. So I think we could be even really creative with um, what that space could be. And, and you know, talking to the Y, I mean, I know somebody who was on a waitlist for the Y Rainbow Room for infants for three years. So their second child got in, but their first did not. Um, the town really is desperate for childcare facilities. So to the extent, you know, I don't know, I'm just trying to think creatively that it's not necessarily a coffee shop or a clothing store. Um, that it might be something, you know, i- i- it could be something where the, the town leases back to Board of Ed or um, to have a nonprofit daycare or something there, just a thought, just something to consider. It's a convenient place right downtown for people.
Yeah, I mean, if you're commuting to the city and you needed to drop your kid at childcare on the way to the train, it really could be a better location.
Yeah, or you're doing preschool and it's like, you know, they have three hours and you drop your kid there for the preschool. It's right by the Board of Ed building and right by the grocery stores. Um, so just something, just something to consider in, in thinking about what, what a sort of quote unquote, commercial use could be. We could really have an opportunity to fill some necessary gaps that are, that are here that we're going to face in the next, also in the next four years that um, are related to housing, but not necessarily, you know, right along with it. So just, yeah, I think it's, and I think the nice thing about the lumberyard space is that it gives you that space that you could have something um, pretty large that would accommodate, accommodate that. So yeah, great.
So Jeremy, there's just one thing, and I don't, I, I hope it's not inappropriate, but um, you know, I, I don't know if most of you or e- either of you have been to Darien and seen all the mixed, mixed use developments being done in, in Darien. And um, all of us have friends that traffic back and forth between Darien and New Canaan. And there's a fair degree of, of pushback on the scale of the development that's being done down there. And I only say that not, not to forge a view, a point of view on what's being done in Darien. But if, if there, if it comes to the point where we're pushing density, we may, we may start getting some pushback, some, some related pushback with people saying, well, look what happened in Darien. We don't want it to, we don't want that to happen here in New Canaan. So it's just something to be aware of. And if you aren't aware of it, you ought to just drift down there and, and, and take a look.
Yeah, no, it's good. Good point.
Parking is, is one of the main issues is that there's a lack of parking in the Corbin District, um, where they're redeveloping everything.
They built a, they've built a sizable um, parking structure backed up to the railroad tracks.
Yeah.
Right, but isn't it, isn't it during construction? I mean, the, the parking in the new buildings not open yet.
Yeah.
So the issue is the construction
Yeah.
disruption as opposed to what will eventually be there, I think.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's no real data yet to say whether it's successful or not. It's just that everybody's upset.
We heard, we, we did talk with the developer and the, the, the um, office part of it has leased up very attractively.
Well, that's good.
All right.
Another small point on the uh, on the lumberyard, thinking about reserved parking. I recall uh, a few years back, um, the town acquired the ground lease at the Avalon site and then converted into a condominium, put the Board of Education in there, then sold a couple of units to some private owners. And there's a parking agreement with along the border of the Avalon side. I think there's a row of, I know, eight to twelve spaces that I think the condo association has rights to. Um, that's a huge, a lot minor point, but just to mention.
Yes, thank you, Mike. Tiger mentioned that. All right, anything else before we wrap up, guys? All right, I would, I would take public comment, but from what I can see on the screen, we don't have any public. So um, I guess the next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Make a motion.
Thank you. All right, this meeting is adjourned. Um, Miles and Jeremy, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon.
Good night.
Night.
Bye.
All right.